Thank you all for coming. Next item on the agenda is a moment of silence. Please join me. A moment of silence for Taylor Ayako, 2006 graduate of the district. Florence Schumacher, a former employee of the district. Ruth Lewis, a retired employee of the district. Edwita Loftus, retired employee. Jeffrey Galonio, a graduate of the district. Mary Cornell, a retired employee. Donald A. Hoover, who attended schools in the district. Karen Mandeville, a graduate of the district. Dean McGivern, retired employee. Joseph A. Stevens, attended schools in the district. Leonard Frye, a 1981 graduate of the district. Howard J. Pearl, a 1983 graduate of the district. And Edward Frye, who attended schools in the district. Thank you. Next item on the agenda. Here we go. Is Office Personnel Appreciation Day. I have a proclamation to read. Throughout history, office personnel has had an impact on the district's students and community. They work for the well-being, welfare, and future of our children. This awesome responsibility is accepted with commitment, dedication, and even love. Because of the complexity and diversity of their role, they must be flexible, resourceful, positive, and patient. The office personnel of the North Syracuse Central School District are professionals of the highest caliber, who have dedicated themselves to the ideals of their profession. Students, parents, administrators, and community members recognize, applaud, and appreciate their efforts to ensure students receive a quality education. To honor the office personnel of the North Syracuse Central School District and their accomplishments and efforts, on behalf of our community's most valuable resource, our children, I, Michael Schuster, President of the Board of Education of the North Syracuse Central School District, on behalf of the board, express our deepest gratitude hereby, declare April 26, 2017 as Office Personnel Appreciation Day to be celebrated with appropriate educational activities. Recommended action: Declare April 26, 2017 as Office Personnel Appreciation Day in the North Syracuse Central School District. Is there a motion, please? Ms. Scanlon, second. Mr. Frifalia, all in favor? Here we go. Thank you. Next section of the agenda? Oh, the awards, forgive me. Next item on the agenda, comments from the audience. We have two speakers this evening. Would we mind both speakers of the three-minute time limit? And that district clerk will be timing that. First speaker is Mindy Bristol, who would like to speak to a reduction in the teaching assistance staff.
Hi, I'm Mindy Bristol, President of the North Syracuse Teaching Assistance Association, and I'm here to address some concerns from the teaching assistance unit. First of all, we feel that the term reductions means the same as cuts to staffing. This makes us feel like we aren't valued by the district. We do, however, know that we are valued by teachers. We are important members of educational teams and want the full inclusion special education model to be successful. We bring immeasurable value to the classroom at a very low cost. We bridge the gap between special education classes and general education classes. We are there to help special education students keep pace with their peers. Not only do we work with special ed students, we also work with gen ed students as well. We wear many different hats. We not only deal with academics, we also attend specials and attend to the physical needs of students, like changing, feeding, toileting, and moving those that can't do it themselves. We provide support during testing and administer tests with IEP modifications. We reteach in small groups and promote student independence whenever possible. We deal with behavioral issues and help students learn valuable social skills and facilitate peer interactions. The relationship we build with both the gen ed and special education teachers is the key to building a successful program. We are an intricate part of a team. We are there to support children so they feel successful. And are successful. Teachers have a lot on their plates and rely on us to help the students be and feel successful as well. It is difficult at times for the teachers to get to every student because each student's learning style and pace they learn at is different. Generalized special education testing is performed on a one-to-one basis at an alternative location, which is different than being in a gen ed classroom setting with distractions. We just want what's best for the students. Parents also rely on us to be there for their children, to provide extra support they need. Thank you for your time and for listening.
Thank you, Mindy. Second speaker is Danette Colburn, please, is that correct? Wishes to speak about the Winter Guard.
Hi, thank you. Yes, my name is Danette Colburn. I'm a parent of a senior Winter Guard student and the president of the Booster Club for the CNS Winter Guard program. Last week, I know we were here and had one of our members speak on the reinstatement, and we just wanted to reiterate thanking you for the consideration of this program and how important it is to all of us. Recently this weekend, our varsity Winter Guard was in Dayton, Ohio for the WGI World Championships, to which they earned a bronze medal. This is a huge accomplishment. They competed over with 47 teams across the nation. They won their round in the prelim round with a very high score. Overall, our score was 94.7, which is the highest scoring class for us, for CNS, in this classic open class, which is really wonderful. Because of this accomplishment, our program moves into the world class next year, which is the highest competing class in Winter Guard that you can attain. All of these things that this team has been able to accomplish is really because of our feeder guard, which starts at the junior guard level. My daughter's been a member of this team for six years, starting out with a junior guard, and undoubtedly, if it wasn't for that junior guard giving her the strong foundation, she wouldn't be where she is today, and either would our varsity program. I can go on and on about all of our accolades, but we really just wanted the board to know how appreciative we are at the consideration of the reinstatement of our junior guard. Thank you.
Thank you, Danette. Next item on the agenda, Board Committee reports, comments, anybody? Tomorrow night, Mary?
Yep, Policy Committee will be meeting tomorrow at 5:00.
Legislative, Paul?
I do not have a report now. We are in discussions about having another meeting.
Anybody else with anything to?
I have another side, non-committee comment. It's a positive thing. I just wanted to mention, I had the opportunity to see the Teacher of the Year, Amy Heissick, speak one more time. It was for the third time. It was at a nice function down in New York City, and she knocked it out of the park. So I just, for me, it was a highlight of the weekend and did us all proud. And she spoke probably in front of maybe over 2,000 people, so I just wanted to share that. On the video, by the way, also Mr. Leclerc and Mr. Corilla were featured in that. Wanted to put that out.
Good. Thank you. Good news. Anybody else with anything?
I just want to say, last week, Mary and I were able to join Bob for the annual BOSI's meeting down in Cortlandt this year. It's always a great night. They go over the administrative budget for the year. They're waiting for all of the local school districts to pass as well, in order to finish theirs, primarily because of the audit with technology aid for school districts, so they're waiting for all of our component districts before they can finalize. And that's an important component because a lot of our resources depend on the administrative budget through our BOSI's. Something else of note, anytime we go down there to a BOSI's event like this, we always have culinary students cook a meal for all of the attendees. And last year, when we were at our BOSI's here, we had a lot of students from CNS that are in that program. And let me tell you, these kids can cook better than a lot of the restaurants that I go to. And it's absolutely incredible to see that our programs through BOSI's are allowing these kids to find a passion that they're going to be able to go to. So, great meeting. Bob, I'm sure will be sending us a report, but it was a great night with Mary and Bob.
Very good, thank you. Anything else? Superintendent's comments, Annette?
A couple of comments. First of all, congratulations to the Winter Guard. That is awesome. And I also want to say thank you for being here to thank the board. That means a lot. In a few minutes, Mr. Keegan's going to give sort of a review of our budget, proposed budget presentation. It's some highlighted changes since the New York State budget is now official. I just have to say, we are disappointed with the little foundation aid that we received. Following tonight's adoption of the budget, Mr. Keegan and myself and cabinet members will be making the rounds to get the word out, and we hope that they'll get out and exercise their right to vote. Budget is the result of really months' worth of work and a different approach in terms of really giving priority to what we. And one last thing, I just want to wish the student staff and folks that have the break-off next week a safe and relaxing spring break.
Item five, routine action items. 5A, consideration of approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of the Board of Education on March 20 and special meeting of April 3, 2017. B, consideration of the classification and school placement of disabled students certified by the District Committee on Special Education. C, consideration of classification and placement of preschool disabled students certified by the District Committee on Preschool Special Education. And D, acknowledgement of the business office reports. I will entertain a motion to approve 5A, B, C, and D together. Mr. Harrington, Ms. Cash, all in favor? 6A, formal adoption of the 2017-18 general fund school district budget.
So last week at our, the special board meeting, we reviewed the budget, and the information unfortunately hasn't changed dramatically since the state budget was finalized. And so, what I'd like to do tonight is move through these slides quickly, so I'm not redundant of last week's meeting, but highlight the changes. And so, I would encourage you, if you need me to slow down or have questions, to just interrupt me, and I can pause on that particular slide. Obviously, with any budget, we're going to talk about our revenue sources and our expenditures, and look at a few of the key components of expenditures, such as staffing, that have changed. We'll talk about our fund balance and the district's financial condition, and our vehicle bonding proposition, as well as the budget timeline and election information. So this is $158.7 million budget. I like this chart because it shows where most of our revenues come from. 53.7% for the tax levy, 42% from state aid. Those are our primary sources of revenue. I've got a chart coming up here that'll kind of show you the trend on how those numbers have trended over time. This slide is new, and it tries to explain the difference between the governor's budget or the executive budget, which is labeled there. Those were the numbers we were working with last week. And the approved budget, that's the budget that was approved Sunday night by the Senate, after the work that our Senate Assembly and Governor did over the last couple of weeks. So as you can see, disappointingly, our total revenue increase is only $80,700. And we were hoping for a much larger increase in foundation aid. We got $190,000 in foundation aid. A number of our other aids changed. They went down, and that's not necessarily troubling. It's just the nature of some of our aids are usage-based, or they're enrollment-based, and so these are the most updated numbers. So, at the end of the day, we only got another $80,000. Again, that's disappointing, and the biggest issue is foundation aid. As I referenced earlier, this is the chart that kind of tells a story here in public education over the last 10-plus years. The burden of funding public education has shifted from the state to the local taxpayer. If you go back to the '08-'09 year, right before the recession, the state aid and the local tax levy were equal parts of our funding. Flash forward to this year's budget or the budget for next year, the '17-'18 year, and you see that state aid only represents about 42.2% of our revenues, and the local tax levy's 53.7. So, there's, you know, you can see that that burden has shifted to the local taxpayer. This is our final revenues, again, $158.7 million. The second column of numbers in from the left, that's our total budget. The $80,000 of additional revenue is coming out of our fund balance. And to be clear on what we're doing this year, we feel that there are some critical programs that need additional funding. There are some things that we've cut that have made our programs not consistent with other programs in central New York. And so, we're going to take out of fund balance the money that's needed to shore up our budget. We've got a lot of work to do, and we still remain hopeful that at some point in the future, our foundation aid will be paid at a level commensurate with the campaign for fiscal equity lawsuit. Not much to talk about in terms of revenue assumptions that have changed. I'm going to talk about the tax cap. We still have some work to do on our building aid. This number might change as we work with state ed, but that's a potential open item. Foundation aid is the big story, though. Our foundation aid, as you can see from this chart, we've had $145 million shortfall in foundation aid since the '07-'08 school year. The next year alone, that number is about $8.3 million less. It's a little over 8 million, I should say, less than it should be in accordance with the campaign for fiscal equity lawsuit. This is the same tax cap we looked at last week. We're looking at a 3.02% increase in the tax levy. That's at the cap. That is, will require a simple majority, and it's about a $70 increase on a house of $100,000 before star. Again, this just shows the three towns we live in, and the tax impact is identical across the towns, despite some differences in assessments in the town of Clay. No change to this chart, just showing you our relative tax on true value. These are all the districts in central New York, and you can see that our tax rate isn't the highest, it isn't the lowest, but it gives you an indication of where we stand. Proposed expenditures, they equal our revenues, and they equal them in a large part due to the fact that we are using our fund balance, as I mentioned in the revenue slide, to support our expenditure budget. Our major costs, again, I like this slide because it emphasizes the point where people-based business, about 78% of our expenses come from, you know, people costs, as they should. The most important thing we do is put teachers in front of students. Our total spending increase is a 2.2% increase in spending, or about $3.4 million. Nothing new on the assumptions with our expenditures. This information has been developing over the last several months, and we believe we have the most accurate information included in our expenditure budget. Our spending per pupil, as we've talked about in the past, is among the lowest in central New York, again, due to the inequity, the inequitable distribution of foundation aid that has a major impact on North Syracuse, and it's something we aspire to improve in the future. I'm not going to go through these in detail, but the story here with our students with disability and looking at this slide, you can see that despite our declining enrollment, the number of students that are classified, those with IEPs, have gone up since 2011, and therefore, as has our percentage of students with disabilities. And that in conjunction with the implementation of the new, more inclusive special ed model warranted the addition of staffing that we've proposed here, consistent with last week, adding additional special ed teachers at both the elementary and secondary level, making some reductions in the teaching assistance staff to address the changing needs of our students in classrooms, and then adding some additional service providers in terms of occupational therapists, physical therapists, and speech therapists. And again, all of this is in response to the issues raised by the report done by Dr. Timothy O'Neill.
Are two of the three new hires referencing the reductions that ones were doing later tonight?
By teaching assistance? Yeah.
I can speak to that. There's one that we're hiring, that we're hiring tonight.
There are two new positions being created.
Two new positions that are being created tonight for students that need one-on-ones to get them through the remainder of this year. Also, one that you created recently that we just recently interviewed for. So all three of those individuals told that their position is on for the rest of the school year, and then they will go on a preferred eligible list. They're not reducing, cutting any that have been with us up until this point.
No change in instructional coaches from our last presentation. We're adding one in the technology area. Consultant teachers, due to our contractual obligation and our par process, we need to add another CT in order to meet the needs of our probationary teachers. Co-curricular athletics, we're restoring a number of programs as outlined on these charts. Consistent with, there have been no changes since last week. These are providing opportunities for roughly 220 students that would otherwise not be able to participate in these activities. This is co-curricular. This is our athletics. BOSI services, we are in the process of finalizing our BOSI's budget, and that'll be finalized in the next week, and we'll be cutting some services and replacing those services with some IT positions. Security, nothing changed here. We just recently got our final approval on the Gillette Road Middle School Entry Project, which was great. That's moving along, so we're doing a lot to secure our buildings, that, and also the work we're doing at Bear Road, to create a more secure single point of entry there with the new project. Our fund balance, so slight change in our fund balance. It is going from, the usage of fund balance is going down by about $80,000 due to that additional funding. We will finish this year. Our projection is that our fund balance will be about a little over 3%. And so, we'll see as we get closer to year-end and the audit whether we have any favorable variance. That would be the second line in that chart that we're showing zero right now. We're hoping that there'll be some favorable variance there. Reserves, no change in reserves. They are about 3.9% of our budget for specific items that we know we have liabilities associated with. Vehicle bonding, again, no change from the last time we presented this, and no change really from last year. We're consistently implementing a program where we keep our buses reasonably current, hopefully less than 10 years old. It's the most cost-effective way to run the fleet, and this program's been very successful in North Syracuse over the years. Again, very nominal impact on the taxes, $2.10 for a house of $100,000 before star. And then in summary, you know, our expenditure increase of 2.2% is pretty reasonable, and Annette said, it's been months of work to try to get it to that level. Proposed tax levy within the tax cap. And, you know, we've, the two points that I'd like to make is that we are desperate for resolution of the foundation aid issue. I was really disappointed. We were all disappointed with how this process went with the state budget. We made little progress this year. And we were forced to balance the budget using fund balance, and this is not sustainable over time without resolution of that foundation aid issue. Vote and election, as Annette said, May 16. We're hoping, I think Annette and I, and Dan and Dawn, and Jason will be out talking to people. I think we do 30 budget presentations in the community. Again, just sharing information, not telling people how to vote, but hopefully we'll have a good voter turnout on May 16 at BOSI's ROL and at the district office. And that kind of concludes, if the board adopts the budget tonight, we'll be back on the 24th to vote on the BOSI's administrative budget. Any questions or comments?
Don, thank you.
Thank you.
Recommended action is to adopt this resolution, resolved that the Board of Education of the North Syracuse Central School District hereby approves and adopts the proposed 2017-18 budget in the amount of $158,690,480, and directs that the following resolution be placed on the ballot for the May 16, 2017 vote. Shall the proposed 2017-18 budget for the North Syracuse Central School District in the amount of $158,690,480 approved by the Board of Education on April 10, 2017 be adopted? Well-called vote? Motion. Before we vote, we should have a motion. Good idea, Connie. Thank you. Motion. Mr. McClintock, second. Ms. Owens. Now we'll deal the well call. Aye. Thank you all. 6B, acknowledgement of gifts. We have several this evening. The North Stars Band parents have donated $4,180 to reinstate the Sisro North Syracuse High School Drum Line Advisor for the 2016-17 school year. The Core Federal Credit Union has covered busing costs to allow the high school students to be bused to Lakeshore Road Elementary School to expand their book mentoring program with younger students beyond Sisro Elementary School, where they could walk across the street. Three, New York Life has donated $500 to the district in support of the North Stars baseball program. Four, the North Syracuse Central School District Sponsor Recognition Program received a check from Nagel Athletic Services Incorporated in the amount of $1,000. A sponsorship sign will be displayed for one year for Nagel Athletic Services, Inc. And five, the North Syracuse Education Foundation donated $250 to the North Syracuse Central School District Special Aid Fund. This $250 will go toward the purchase of cello strings for the CNS String Quartet Co-Curricular Group. Motion to accept this gifts with gratitude. Ms. Cash, Mr. Harrington, all in favor? Five, pardon me. 6C, which goes along with the donation, this is the corresponding recommendation to reinstate the Drum Line Advisor. So we have a motion, the following positions being hereby created effective September 1/16 through June 30/17 due to the donation of funds, the Drum Line at CNS High School. Recommended action, approve the above resolution. Mr. Leon, Ms. Owens, all in favor? D, recommendation to create 1.0 FTE teaching assistant at the North Syracuse Junior High. D, recommendation to create 1.0 FTE teaching assistant at the North Syracuse Junior High and a 1.0 FTE teaching assistant at Smith Road Elementary School. Commented on just shortly, a while ago, are there any questions on these? Okay, motion to create these positions. Ms. Scanlon? Ms. Owens? All in favor? E, an amendment to the July 11/16 Annual Organizational Meeting, appointment of chief school physician. Doctor, oh, pronounced the first name, Cosmos, but I don't know the first name. Alenai? Alenai? Well, Dr. Cosmos. There we go. Chief school physician will be serving as the district's chief school physician until March 31, 2017. This recommendation is to appoint Dr. Justin Fedor as chief school physician April 1, 2017. Have a motion to appoint Dr. Fedor, please. Mr. McClintock? Mr. Frifalia? All in favor? OCMBOSEs contract with the CNYRIC, a rather lengthy resolution. Don, quickly, what is this one?
It's actually just for a copier lease.
A copier lease. Okay, long resolution for one copier. Okay, motion to approve the resolution for the copier lease. Ms. Cash? Mr. Harrington? All in favor? Surplus of non-marketable equipment. We have non-marketable equipment at various locations. This motion is to declare this stuff as non-marketable surplus to be disposed of. Motion for this, please. Ms. Cash? Ms. Owens? All in favor? Seven, personnel reports. 7A, instructional personnel. I will entertain a motion to separate the athletic appointments from the remainder of instructional personnel. Is there a motion for that? Mr. Frifalia, second. Mr. McClintock? All in favor? So the athletic appointments are separated. I'll entertain a motion to approve the instructional personnel absent the athletic appointments. Is there a motion for that? Mr. McClintock? Ms. Scanlon, second. All in favor? Now a motion to approve the athletic appointments. Motion to approve. Mr. Marizio, second. Ms. Scanlon? All in favor of the athletic appointments. Choose to be eight. I'll oppose. Mr. Harrington? B, support staff personnel, and C, administrative personnel. I'll entertain a motion to approve B and C together. Mr. Leone? Ms. Cash? All in favor? Hi, Ms. Mike. Oh, retiree. Thank you, Mike. Under the support staff, Linda Peterson, school secretary right here in the district office, is going to retire. With 15 and 1/2 years of service, we wish Linda the best, so good for her. Thank you. At this time, a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of receiving an update on two legal matters relative to potential litigation, and to review the employment record of four individuals with no action to follow. Motion. Ms. Cash? Mr. Leone? All in favor? Don moved. We'll go to executive session. Thank you all. Old students, yeah.